Let me have everyone's attention, we're getting ready to start our meeting. And we're gonna ask that Pastor Jennifer Dunn of the Christ Community Outreach Church in Nazareth, give us our prayer. We're gonna ask Councilman Crum, will he follow with our pledge of allegiance? Would you please stand?
Good afternoon. Most gracious Father, Creator of the universe, Father of all mankind and of all things, the omnipotent, omnipresent, omniscient God, we come to you this evening with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this mayor and his administration, and for all the citizens and non-citizens of this winning city. We thank you for raising up this mayor administration for such a time as this. Father, we humbly ask that you would continue to help he and his administration to fulfill the vision, the mission, and the purpose that you have laid upon their hearts. Surround him with positive, energetic, willing, like-minded people to serve West Memphis City, so that his purpose would be accomplished. My Lord and my God, he needs you every hour, every minute, every second of the day. He knows that he cannot walk, he can't even walk without you holding his hand. That's why this evening, he paused to acknowledge you first and foremost, as his source and his strength. Father, continue to grant him wisdom, protection, direction, and guidance as he serve, as he share his ideas and manage the crisis in the city and plans for new infrastructure in this winning city. Father, keep this dear brother and his administration faithful and grant him favor. Now may your blessings rest upon this meeting. May everything settle down, bring honor and glory to your name. We ask all these things in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Let us face the flag, please. For the flag.
Let the flag. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its virginity and its strong.
Thank you.
Good evening to our council and all of our visitors that are here and all of our elected officials. We're gonna get our meeting started. I'm gonna call this meet to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Yeah.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Muhammad.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have ten out of ten that's present. That's a quorum. We had no bid opening, so what are any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve this minute.
Second.
All are paid by?
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved. I'm gonna go down to our old business. Mr. City Attorney, will you do the first one?
This is the third reading of an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax within the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, may I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing now, Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
No.
Councilor Crum?
No.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
Yes.
We got eight out of two, so that ordinance does pass. Will you give that ordinance a number, Mr. City Clerk?
Ordinance number 2677, 2677.
That number is 267, 2677?
Correct.
2677. Go to the second, City Attorney?
It's the third reading of an ordinance calling a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, on the question of levying a citywide one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, may I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
No.
Councilor Crum?
No.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
Yes.
That vote goes eight to two, so that one passes as well, so you give that ordinance a number as well.
Ordinance number 2678, 2678.
That number is 2678, 2678. Third reading?
Mayor, may I have an opportunity to let the lawyer come up and kinda give a definition between those first two readings?
Well, what we'll do, I have on the come up soon if we get through this last one.
It's the third reading of an ordinance calling a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, on the questions of issuing bonds under amendment number sixty-two to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, for the purpose of financing all or portion of the costs of capital improvements, levying a new three-fourths of one percent sales and use tax, for the purpose of retiring such bonds, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, could I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing now, City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Cat?
No.
Councilor Crum?
No.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
Yes.
Once again, that vote goes eight to two. It passes. Will you give that ordinance a number?
Mayor McClendon, I have a discussion.
Okay. Call the number and then echo them, Ms. Muhammad.
Ordinance number 2679, 2679.
That number is 2679, 2679. Councilor Muhammad?
Right. Thank you, Mayor McClendon. On this particular ordinance, I would like to say to our public, that it is not city council who's imposing this tax on the citizens. This is simply us voting to put it on the ballot, for you to vote for it or against it. In my own opinion, we as citizens have a right to vote. That's right. If we were to vote this down, this particular ordinance, then we're saying to our citizens, we're not gonna give you the right, which is something that you have, that nobody can take away from you. That's right. Those who want to exercise their right to vote for this, you'll have the opportunity in November. Those who want to exercise their right to vote against it, then you'll have that right in November. But I know there's been a lot of buzz about not passing this, we don't want any more taxes. To those of you who don't want the tax, lobby hard against it. But those who want it, lobby hard for it. But I just want to make it perfectly clear, as some are attesting, that it's city council who's putting this out there. We're not. I'll have to go to the polls and vote for or against, just like any other citizens. I can't do it here on this council floor. But I just want to make it perfectly clear, in case someone didn't understand, all city council did today was just vote to have this placed on the ballot. When the attorney comes up, I'm gonna ask him, why is it so important that we put this on the ballot, opposing city council voting for it? So our people, our citizens, can get a clear understanding of what's going on here. Cause I don't want anyone saying, you all voted for that tax, city council. No, we're not. We're just voting to give you your right. That's right. And that is to vote. That's right.
Thank you. And also, I agree with you one thousand percent, Councilor Muhammad. It's so important that, you know, we've been going through this and you hear the wrong reasons of why we vote for it. Now, if you vote for it or against it, for whatever reason may be, you have that right. But we just want you to know the reasons why we placing this tax on the agenda, so you better make an inform, this decision of what you decide to do. Mr. Bowman, will you please come forward?
Mayor, if I may, if I may?
Yeah.
Could we, could you also talk about how it's gonna be on the ballot? Okay, so that you can vote for one, or you can vote for all, or you can vote for part?
Be happy to. So, the exact ballot language that will be considered by the voters here in the city on November fifth, is contained in the ordinances that you all just adopted. Okay, so in ordinance twenty-six seventy-eight, in section two, that is the ballot language for the quarter cent permanent sales and use tax. This tax can be used to pay and secure the repayment of bonds. It can be used for parking recreational purposes. It can be used for public safety purposes. So that is the first question that the voters will see when they go to the polls on November the fifth. The other four questions are contained in section three of ordinance twenty-six seventy-nine. Those are the four questions on the issuance of bonds, and the levy of a temporary three-fourths of one percent tax. Temporary, in the sense that the collections of that tax can only be used to pay debt service on the bonds that are approved by the voters. So when those bonds are paid off, that tax will automatically, by virtue of state statute, terminate. So the city will not have the option of continuing that three-quarter cent tax after those bonds are paid off. That would require going to the voters yet again to do that. As you can see, there are four questions in section three of that ordinance. The voters can approve one of those bond questions. Say you only like parks, you vote no on the other three. You could vote yes on two. You could vote yes on three. You could vote yes on all four. And you would still only levy a three-quarter cent tax to pay debt service on that bond issue. Keeping in mind that that's in addition to the quarter cent that is going to be in question one. So there's five total questions on the ballot. If all five questions are approved, the total increase in the sales tax rate in the city of West Memphis would be one percent. One percent. The voters could vote yes for the quarter cent, and vote no for all the bond questions. In that case, the tax rate would go up by a quarter percent. Likewise, they could vote no on the quarter cent, and they could vote yes on one, two, three, or four of the bond questions, and there would be a three-quarter cent tax increase. So if you have this approved by the voters, just as you have presented it, then there would be a one percent tax increase in the city, again, assuming that all five questions were approved in November.
And may I ask, what is the total amount of the bond?
The total amount is the aggregate of, again, a maximum principal amount. Our state constitution requires that you put a maximum principal amount of bonds to be issued for each of the purposes. And the reason there are four questions is because our state constitution requires that separate purposes be voted separately. So we could not combine parks, and police, and fire, and drainage in one question. They have to be separated. You have to put a maximum principal amount of bonds for each of those purposes. So, again, the voters are authorizing a maximum principal amount of twenty-eight million, six hundred and thirty thousand for parks, eight million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand for police, two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand for fire, and ten million, three hundred and ten thousand for drainage. But it will be up to the city as to how much of that total maximum principal amount is actually issued by the city for those purposes. That's the ceiling on what the city can issue. You just can't go over that, but you could certainly issue less if the city did not have need for that amount of bond proceeds for those projects.
So if, if you add up all the different cost for each one of these, it's around forty-nine million?
Yeah. I have to get my calculator.
That's, that's correct.
That's alright, there's a lot of numbers.
I have not added those, those four together, so.
Attorney, I do have a question for you. Lorraine Muhammad. Of course, city council voted today to place this measure on the ballot in November. Answer this question for me. Why is it that city council could not just impose it on our citizens? That's something that people need to know. The difference between us voting for it, and telling the citizens, yes, we have passed this vote ourselves, as far as.
And you are correct. All you did was simply refer this to the voters on November the fifth.
Right.
So they will have a right to vote for or against all five of the questions that we just discussed. Under our state law, the city council has no ability to levy a sales and use tax. It must be approved by the voters.
Everybody to hear, we don't have the ability to do it. It's not our purpose of choice. We have to put it out there for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, a little off the subject, that same thing goes for the A and P tax.
Now it does.
Yeah, now it does.
Now it does. And that's a recent change in the law.
Increase A and P tax.
Right. It used to be that you could, you could levy an A and P tax without voter approval, prior to the law being changed, maybe at the last session.
What is your best guess of how long it will take to pay this bond off?
I'm just the bond lawyer, okay? So I will not wade off into financial matters. Mr. Michael McBride from Stevens was not able to attend the meeting tonight. He would be better person to answer that question. And I don't know if he's had the conversations with you, Mayor, about, about that. But again, the tax is only on the books so long as those bonds are outstanding. And once those bonds pay off, then that tax goes off. The collections of the tax over and above what's needed to pay debt service will be used to pay off the bonds early. So as your sales tax collections grow in the coming years, the anticipation is that the bonds will pay off even earlier than originally issued.
Also, I wanna ask a question as well, and I wanna make it clear for the public. This tax, point seven-five of it, if it's all approved, it will sunset, just like the hospital tax sunset, correct?
It will sunset when the bonds are retired. That is correct.
Thank you.
Will you explain to the audience what sunset is?
Sunset means it, it terminates.
Goes away.
At some point in the future. And we don't know what that date is, only because we don't know how quickly your bonds will pay off.
Because we had to do the same thing with the hospital.
Yes.
And you all didn't feel it, because it didn't come out the pocket.
Sixty months?
That's right.
That's what I thought, right. That's right.
In order to grow, you got to do something. Our policies need a police station.
Yes.
There's a lot need to be done. So while you saying no, that the voters cannot vote for it, you need to rethink that.
Well, let me, let me add this real quick. First of all, I wanna thank all the council people who voted, regardless if you voted for it, against it. I just thank you all for, you know, showing how you felt about it. And that's good, because we have a diverse community. And there's no problem. Sometimes, we agree on a whole bunch of things. There may be something here or there that we may not agree on, but we still try to work together for what's in the good of the people. I thank you all for who did vote for it. Cause for me, as mayor, we need a quality center for our seniors and our children, recreational center for our kids. We need a new fire department, and we need a new police department. And with everyone complaining about this infrastructure, we definitely need that for infrastructure. So it doesn't matter, some may be out there talking about what ain't gonna happen, you know? It's just the people of West Memphis, and you all vote and make the difference. And if it happens, it happens. If it don't, but one thing you all can say, is that the city council did not give you all the opportunity to improve your city. Thank you.
But again, it doesn't mean that because we voted no, we won't vote for maybe one or two of the improvements.
That, that, I think that may be true, Councilman Crum. But one of the things I see, if you don't want the tax, you don't want the tax. If you do want it, don't, don't vote. I mean, if you vote, okay, well, I want one or two things. That's just like saying you want the water, the swimming pool and the infrastructure, but you don't want the police department, or vice versa. You know, when it comes down, and I look at it, is you gonna vote? Cause all these are a need, whether they one, two, three, or three, two, one. It's a need for the city of West Memphis. And we did what was good for West Memphis. And I know this administration, along with this council, we all worked hard to make sure everything that we need done. And there's so many things that hadn't been done in this city in over five years.
Amen.
That this, this administration, with the support of this city council, how may happen? And from years before this five year, no one said nothing. So, we gonna do some things. You don't agree with it, fine. We gonna make the changes that happen for the city, and we gonna move the city forward. And thank you all, and we'll see you all at the polls in November.
Amen.
I'm gonna go down. We had no news, but no new business, so I'm gonna go down permission request, permission to distribute Southland Racing Charity contribution to the youth charity organizations. What are you all's wishes on that?
Make a motion that we disperse the funds equally as presented on the report.
Second.
Second.
Boys and girls clubs, a total of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
Alright, we got a motion and a second?
Second.
All are paid by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. I'm gonna go down to community reports. I'm gonna ask Mr. Whiteside, where he start to make his way forward while we get a Main Street report, and then we're gonna the police, airport, and their personnel.
Evening, council, mayor. You have your, or my report in front of you. I'll just hit some of the highlights. We just finished up the Taste of the Town. That was Tuesday night. It was a, it was a huge success. We raised over thirteen thousand dollars. And we're gonna use that money to reinvest in Main Street and Broadway, turn around and do reinvestment grants. That's the plan. We had thirty-six sponsors, twelve vendors, and over three hundred and fifty people in attendance. And any questions on that, Taste of the Town? At the bottom, it talks about the old courthouse, the Bollinger Building update. What's kinda new with that is, starting on Monday, the abatement process should begin on the asbestos and the lead. InSafe and Snyder are partnering together. Snyder's subcontracted with InSafe, but they will begin the process. It should take about four weeks, is what they told me. The cost is right at two hundred thousand dollars, but that is being paid for with brownfield money that we've received through the state. There's an asterisk there, cause there is a little bit of cost. We're looking at hiring a company to move out the remaining files, some old computers, to have them properly shredded, disposed of. We're getting a second quote tomorrow that we should have that. So it will, there will be a little, a little bit of cost, but that building will then be abated for lead and asbestos. And one thing we're, we're looking at is turning it into a museum with some meeting space, some, some conference space, maybe to house some of our nonprofits, some of our other area entities. But that, to get there, that will be a long time coming. This process, getting the lead and asbestos abated, that's a good first step. But then, you know, getting it ready, the structure will have to be really looked at, to make sure it's structurally sound. It's gonna be a long process to raise the money to do what needs to be done to that building. I don't want anybody to get their hopes up and think that we're getting this done, and you're gonna look up in a year or two, and there's gonna be a museum there. No, we're looking at a, I don't wanna put a timeline on it, but a few years, several years, many, many years.
Has it been determined yet how much lead and asbestos is in that building? Does
Yeah, they did. We, we've had Snyder in there to do the inspection. They found it in numerous places, all over the building.
So is it, is it sound to even try to save it?
Yes. So, we have had an architect in there, Clements and Associates. They came over and have, have walked the building and done floor plans for, for us. It is good enough to save. It is worth saving. But there will need to be, they estimate some roofwork, maybe some wallwork and repair, some things like that.
I wanna say, I had my first job here.
Okay.
Whiteside?
Yes.
Is the whole court room gonna be able to save that? The whole, gonna be able to save that part also?
They said they could.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What about the little jail behind it?
We wanna save that too. That's actually where they found the lead, and it will be encapsulated. All parts of that building and structure should be saved. They were deemed savable. And on the back is a layout. That's actually something else that you paid for, is floor plans for that structure. It's so old, and has been added on to so many times, that we couldn't actually locate a coherent set of unified plans. But we do have that now. And we've had a meeting with Clements and Associates, and they're drawing up some rough designs, some, some ideas of what it could look like, if we decide to go certain routes, with some, some loose cost estimates of, of what to do with the building.
Also, we wanna thank State Representative Deborah Ferguson for her support and helping us receive this grant to get this done.
Yep, she got the ball rolling on it. Made the phone calls. And then, you've probably heard a little bit of talk of, we're, we're getting the water tower painted.
Yes.
You guys approved that a few months back. The holdup with that is the weather. We've got to wait until the humidity comes down. It's being done professionally, and they don't wanna do it when it's not gonna be done right. So they gotta wait until the fall or winter, and when the temps and humidity come down, and that's when Viking will be up there to do it. And it, pretty excited. It's gonna look pretty sharp, I believe. Any questions on, on that?
Yes. Would the legs be done also? You know, there was a discussion about that.
We asked them about that. That would have nearly doubled the price.
So we will not, okay.
No.
Raymond, let me ask you. Your predecessor was gonna, had a fundraiser to put bricks at the base of that water tower. Are they there?
They are there.
Right. Well, I think you're gonna do a great job in this capacity, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have to remove the lights? Are they gonna replace them back?
They, they said they won't have to remove the lights.
They won't?
They can work around them.
Good, that's good. Well, we'll get some spray paint, paint the lights.
Thank you, Raymond. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We're gonna move next to our police department?
Yeah. Good evening. Police commission met on August the fifth, twenty twenty-four, at twelve noon. And items discussed, our school, they have eleven SROs issued rag rifles. School will purchase safe-to-severe weapons. School is researching to possibility of purchasing additional equipment. Southland, we have ten officers assigned, Skycock cameras. We have fifty-four total. Cameras were taken down for repair, utility, assisted with reinstalling. Researching the lease of fifteen additional cameras on a three-year program for approximately sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars per year. License play readers will be installed. In case you didn't know, they will be installed at, coming into the city, and on each end of the city. And that's where, when someone, we can monitor everybody entering and leaving the city. And if, if there's a crime, we can just about track that vehicle.
That's right.
To locate.
So don't do crime, okay?
Yes. And our police foundation is also researching additional forms. Our dispatch will be located in one building, will be transferred to county facility on October the first of this year. Grants, personnel, help update all the necessary paperwork to ensure we are in compliance and receiving reimbursement on our grant, active grants. Staffs are always looking for new grant opportunities. Let me say, our present police department is in dire need of immediate, immediate repair. Let me say, our present police department is in dire need of immediate, immediate repairs. It is in bad shape.
It is?
It is, yes. And, and you, you need to tour it to see, see it for yourself. Personnel, currently, we have ninety-five officers. That's up from only seventy-one in twenty-twenty-two. And we have hired new officers back. They are, they are coming back to our city.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say ninety-five officers are the most officers West Memphis have ever had under this administration.
And they're still, I think they're still looking for around a hundred to be fully staffed. Okay? And a hiring expo was held a couple of weeks ago. And they are steadily getting in new applications. Citizen request, Sam Jordan, one of our citizens. Sam Jordan III requested reimbursement for tire damage and the staff, they are now reviewing that issue. End of report.
Thank you, airport?
Airport. The airport met this morning at eight o'clock and they were discussing the North Apron Rehab Projects, which will be, the completion date has been pushed out until November due to the rain delays at the start of the project. We're receiving two loads of jet fuel today to put into the new jet fuel tank to begin the seven-day soak test for the jet fuel rehab project. And then the contract and notice to proceed with the spa repair project are prepared and ready to sign by the airport commission chair.
That concludes you.
Thank you.
Personnel?
Yes, the personnel met on August fourteenth. The members of the commission had an opportunity to meet Mrs. Carr. Seems to be a wonderful lady, very professional. Had a lot of general discussions about some issues that will need to be addressed over the next couple of months, definitely before the end of the year. The updated employee handbook was handed out. She made numerous new additions to that. So committee, committee will have about a month to review it. We'll all meet back in September to discuss what we can bring forward to the council for consideration and approval. That concludes.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, Dawn, could you come a little closer? Cause I have some announcement that I wanna give the people and I definitely wanna get you to get these dates or I just. High Tower Park, High Tower Park grand opening would be September the sixth at four P.M. That's High Tower Park with the amphitheater. The grand opening would be September the sixth at four o'clock for the grand opening. That's the High Tower Park on Fourteenth and Broadway. The element, our new element shelter that's going down behind Southland, it ran its first advertised bid this past Wednesday. They got to run it one more time to get the last and final bid. That would be next Wednesday. So those bids are now running. Eugene Wood Civic Center, it will run its first bid this Wednesday. So the new look of the Eugene Wood Civic Center, it will run its first advertised bid this Wednesday. And then another Wednesday after that and then it will be done. The reason why I'm giving you all this information, cause I know that we have a lot of things going on. I think it's so important and transparent, it's the mayor to allow you all to know what we doing and what we at in those steps. So I continue doing these at every meeting that we have. But the Eugene Wood Civic Center, right across the street, it will start, it will be advertised the bids that do the new construction that they're gonna do in the front of it will start this Wednesday. The advertised bidding of it. Rich Road Bridge, let's talk about Rich Road Bridge. I know that's been the biggest, well, we know that has been talked about a long, a long time. The city of West Memphis have submitted all the information that needs to do to RDA for the Rich Road Bridge can move forward. I'm gonna say this once again, for everyone who have said it, the Rich Road Bridge has never been an issue on the city of West Memphis. All the council members and for me as mayor, it has never been our responsibility. So I'm gonna say it again, for those who don't hear, Rich Road Bridge has never been a city of West Memphis issue. But now all the information has been turned in. We had a little delay last week where we were waiting on the gas coming because it's a gas line that goes in the right of way of the, well, no, the gas, the gas line is, the gas line is going in. There are easements, but it has to be moved.
Yeah, it's something that the city has got to have paid for, but we have submitted all documents to the other parties and just waiting.
All right. The Lewis Street Bridge, the Lewis Street Bridge reopen September the third. Got that day down? The Lewis Street Bridge reopen September the third. The Reddick Street Bridge, let's talk about the Reddick Street Bridge. Engineerous guy, Mike Foster with Pickering, and they came up with a green concept. But this is a one-hundred percent responsibility of the city of West Memphis. So it's gonna take you all, this council people, to think about it. It's something that we wanna do because that price comes up to six-hundred thousand dollars for a pedestrian bridge. We are right now currently looking at another design to try to get a cheaper bridge. But right now, the council say, well, hey, this is what you all wanna do. I know, Councilman Crum, you, you talk about that a lot. So it's six-hundred thousand, you wanna spend six-hundred thousand to get a pedestrian bridge built? If you all think that's a better way of spending money, you all will make that decision. Tilden Rogers Park. Councilman, oh, you hear? Tilden Rogers Park would be going out for its first ring of advertised bid this Wednesday. Tilden Rogers Park on April fourth will be going to advertisement on this Wednesday. I wanna thank, I see my director, Director Jones, thank you all for doing that. I know it's been talked about for a long time. We know in the past, things happen, but I can't spend money when COVID was going through. And keep in mind, you all, we've been having some more issue with COVID, so please make sure you all stay safe. We don't need to go back in the day on that. So make sure you take care of yourself. But Rich Road, no, I'm sorry, but Tilden Rogers Park does go to bid this Wednesday. The fire department on Seventh Street, the new concept that the council just voted for, the new concept will be ready in two weeks. So that next council, not this Thursday, the next Thursday after that, I'll be showing you all new council, new concepts for the new fire department on Seventh Street. So you all, we're hiding in your hand. Also, the police department did complete its tour of the station that's in Memphis, Tennessee. And they are getting together with lab to make sure they can see what we need, what we can combine, how those things done. So that we can start, if you all approve it, we can start getting a whole new look on our police department. Because you know, right now, I always say it like a son. If you need a police department, you gotta go down there and match on the bill. And I question anyone, especially anyone that may be against it. Get up and go down into the police department, walk through and then come back and look me in the face and say that we don't need new police department. Just do it. If you all can see, we have begun to work on City Hall. Because I feel like if I'm asking citizens to hire their place, where it need to be at, we working on other buildings for the city. It's so important that we make sure we take care of City Hall. And when City Hall is currently under, has been stripped, as well as it's being caulked right now. The painting actually will start this weekend or Monday at the latest. They'll start painting, then you come back when they get through painting, you'll see the new big seal, the City Hall sign, the whole nine yards. And then the landscaping will soon come soon. It'll be something that you all can be proud of to say, well, hey, when y'all walking to City Hall, we can see the hall taken care of and that's so important. Raymond gave all of the information on the, the new courthouse, where the courthouse museum, as well as the water tower. So you all hear him. For everyone on streets, streets, our overlay, this, this city council, and I thank you all so much, voted to spend one-point-one million dollars on overlay. And I give them all the credit. We are spending one-point-one million dollars to fix overlay, we start September the fifteenth. Actually, we're gonna have on our, on our website, all the streets that will be taken care of. It's a lot being done in War Three. A lot been done in War Two. It's even out all of the city. It's gonna be done. And can you think about if you all approve, this infrastructure will be closed on open digits like in Shady Grove, open digits on Nineteenth, Eleventh and across streets. Open digits on War Three, we get those things taken care of, we're gonna fix those by your finally, this concrete, trees then grow in five years. I keep saying that, but I want you all to understand that. Some people are like, it's a mayor, this man, no, this should have been done a long time. But now I have to fix it. I'm not gonna run away from the problem. I'm gonna make sure we address it and get it done now. Council members, we got a special council meeting, August twenty-second at one o'clock. And that's gonna be over. Hopefully, a great pilot program, a great CDA. I told you all, got a big announcement and I can't wait to let it out. And the opening of the bids for the relocation utility for the roundabout for RDA. So everything goes according to schedule. This is gonna be amazing for our city and it's gonna quiet some of the naysayers out there as well. So I can't wait till we do that. And once, and I'm getting ready to go to this last piece, I'm just gonna have my little piece when I say this. I want you all to know in this text that everyone is considering, you know, if this was a tax where you didn't know where your money was going to, then I can understand you being skeptic or saying no. But when I can go pay my hand on something, I can feel like an aqua center that's gonna help our young kids. And I'm gonna be proud to see my kids being on the swim team for our high school, or seeing our seniors who need those third pretty pools, or our babies that need that swimming. When I look and see the recreational centers that our young people need to keep them out of trouble. When I look at the police department, I can go in and walk in the station and not have to hit the button like we at a sonics. Or when I walk in there and it's raining in the building or the bottom part of it got mold infected, I think change. When your house is on fire and people running out your house and the fire department is running into your house to save your property, I think we do that for. And for those that don't understand, talking about infrastructure, the infrastructure of West Memphis has been there a whole long time before I even became mayor. And here I am, once again, trying to fix it, rather than ones that don't even like me. I wanna fix it on behalf of them because it's about West Memphis and not about them. So I'm looking forward to this and I wanna let you all know, the ballot, this was the easy part to get on the ballot. The real challenge is gonna be getting those that's out that don't vote normally to get registered and vote for this election.
Yeah.
All right, any other announcements here?
Yeah, citizen request.
Citizen, yes, right. We have a citizen request that Ms. Harris wanted us to consider. So can I make a motion and say can they place that person on the agenda?
Second.
All the paper, aye. Opposed, she's added, what's her name?
Ms. Welch.
Ms. Welch, she's here. Come up and give your name and your address. We can only get five minutes, you can address the council.
My name is Zakaria Welch. You say give my address?
Yeah, in West Memphis.
Y'all live in West Memphis.
Okay.
And on August second, seventh, I hit a pothole and I made an incident report and Mr. Kenneth Johnson said that he could not approve it. So I had to be here. She have the pictures and the estimate for my car. And I'm just here to get fixed what the pothole caused.
Okay, there, I know this, the process it normally goes to Public Works. Public Works normally look at it and then make a recommendation to the council, but since you at the council.
I'm gonna refer it to Public Works. Are we gonna refer it to Public Works?
Well, they're, they're gonna be able to see it made by the council, do y'all? How y'all wanna handle it?
I would like to ask her a question. Where, where did you hit? Where was it located, the pothole?
On Vanderbilt, I was coming from picking up my daughter from school.
Vanderbilt, where baby? Was it just on Vanderbilt, like what, what area?
Um.
Avalon.
Yeah, Vanderbilt and Avalon, coming from Falk Elementary.
And, and you went into a?
It's like uneven concrete. I showed, gave her the pictures of it.
Put your pair of socks down in his house, so we can see them.
Just FYI, that Public Works meets on the first Tuesday at noon here in this facility.
You saying that I would have to be out of transportation that long?
I'm just telling you when it, you need to meet with Public Works over this.
I reached out to the city hall constantly back and forth. I got the runarounds and different people. Luckily, Mr. Kenneth Johnson was here to help me. And I'm getting upset because I'm constantly getting a runaround. Mr. Kenneth Johnson helped me everything that he could do to try to help me.
How much is your estimate?
The estimate is thirty-three hundred, but y'all do not have to cover the tires and the, with alignment because I have a warranty on it. But other than that, I just want my car fixed in what's, what the pothole caused, that's it. Everything else, I will fix myself.
Well, let me, let me add this to you. I have just received this information today, so I haven't been knowing about this.
I've been, I told you this on the seventh.
I know, you probably, you probably did tell them, I'm not, I'm not being argumentative with you. I'm just saying, I'm just learning about this situation, but how this program normally work, because the city have this thing called Tor Community.
Okay, why was I not aware of it?
Excuse, excuse, why were you not aware of it?
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Kenneth. I talked to the person that answered the phone.
Okay, okay, let me, let me, that, I wanna do explain to you. I'm not trying to go back and forth with you. I'm not against you. I'm just saying the procedure, when something like this happen, you go to the Public Works Department.
You talking about Mr. Odell and the street department?
Ma'am, listen to me, please. I know you're upset, but I just, darling, I just want you to listen to me. The Public Works is made up of council members. You talk to the Public Works Chair, which is Ms. Harris. You would go through that department and it's the procedure, how it goes. You go to their department, then they make a decision on whether or not they're gonna fix your car or not. Cause you came with a, with a thirty, most amount on the car, thirty-seven hundred. And this is a large, this, this is a large amount of, just listen to me. And then they, their Public Works then make the decision, bring it for the full approval of the council.
It wouldn't be the whole full amount because for the West Memphis, they put my tires on there and they put the wheel alignment on there. Like I said, I have a warranty that'll cover my wheel alignment. And the tires, of course, that's my, my responsibility is to get my tires fixed.
Okay.
I just want what the pothole caused fixed.
The pothole?
The pothole, the uneven concrete.
How much, how much are, I know you said the thirty-three hundred is not what you asking, what is you asking for to get approval?
Um, I think it's twenty-one hundred or two thousand.
Here's what I, here's what I would, what I would really love to do. We as this council body, we've sat here and we've talked about millions and millions of dollars and we are wanting to repair buildings and things of that nature. Here we got a young lady.
I agree.
With children.
I have two.
Two children, taking them to and from school. When you look at this small amount of money, I know we can override the, the Public Works Department. And I believe we as a council body with empathy in our hearts, she's not asking for an exorbitant amount of money. She's not trying to cheat us out of anything. She's just asking for her car to be repaired.
I think she asked for twenty-one hundred, make the motion.
I make a motion.
That we fix and repair the car.
You make me second it. All the paper, aye.
I'll second it.
Opposed, the twenty-one hundred is approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That was righteous, that was right.
We didn't do nothing wrong, did we?
No.
Now we need to get a call.
Yeah.
It's wrong? Oh, okay.
Do we have anyone that wanna bring anything else before the council? I simply wanna say it's been a great day for West Memphis and let's move forward passing this tax for the people of West Memphis. Thank you all so much. Can I get a motion and second to it?
Mayor, we believe, Chief Presley, I need to speak to you. And Ms. Reinhardt, I need to speak with you.
Can I get a motion and second to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all for coming out.